Part of your, you know, your strategic plan, that you're doing your performance review, all those pieces, very important. Also, you're recognized as an ISO class one department. Very few departments reach that standard. So we looked at that. We looked at, for example, your training records. You've achieved that, but there's always room for improvement. And so we tried to look at where that is and how can you sustain that as your community grows. The third piece I'd note that during the scope of our work and during the time we were doing this, you were fortunate enough to receive a 2024 SAFER grant for 24 additional firefighters. That's huge. That's tremendous. So I applaud you for applying for that. We, many departments apply, not very many are awarded. So, you know, we think that that is really a positive and I hope that you can walk away pleased with that. We worked diligently in that. In Greensboro, Chief knows me, we put, we applied five years in a row trying to get that and we finally did. But I encourage you to use that and that's going to be a big piece about what we talk about today. You're one of few that have received that award and that large award. So all these are important in your framework as we're looking at this data and information. You're coming into this as an accredited entity. You're already on ISO class one. Those are two very important measuring pieces and you have a part and a very important part of the solution moving forward with the SAFER grant. So all of those are important in context to be able to take a look at that. As the manager said, there were three areas that we were specifically asked to look at. One, we were asked to look at this individual incident that occurred. Number two, we wanted to see how you benchmark against other North Carolina departments as well as some industry standards. And three, look at your training records and review those. And we looked at all three of those in great detail. So I'll step through each of those individually and then obviously be glad to take any questions that you might have as well. So first, let's look at your post-incident analysis. We conducted this work in person on site here in High Point. We individually spoke with every responding person to an incident that occurred. We had two facilitators that worked with your folks and we had really, we received very well. The department had conducted a post-incident analysis and that's typical. That's what most do in a significant incident when it occurs. And so we came in kind of another layer and gave an opportunity for your personnel to be able to talk to our consultants, both retired fire chiefs, and they've been through many of these. The two that came and helped though have also been through a line of duty death situation. And so they were well experienced in this. And so they know, they know well where after, after an incident occurs, how important it is to really get to the facts and details. So we're going to talk about this one here first. In our, in our role in looking at these types of post-incident analysis, we review what the department did and your department did exactly what they should have done. We really didn't find a contrast between what your department had seen and the outcome that we had produced for you. In other words, they were not polar differences. But we did provide an opportunity for your folks to be able to speak freely and provide, you know, be able to share their thoughts and their ideas. And we were able to organize those and present those back in a way that hopefully would be helpful in moving your department forward and your city forward. So we review what you did and then we listen. We listen to everyone and we gave opportunity one-on-one. We also talked to folks afterwards if they needed to speak individually. So we really offered that, you know, independent third-party opportunity for everyone to speak and they did. Your folks were very engaged in that and we consider that to be, you know, very successful from that perspective. We gather information about the incident. We review the information you had and we compare and contrast that to what might happen in other similar sized cities in North Carolina as well. And then we develop some recommendations based on that. So that's the flow that we look at in any of these processes. Again, that word that we've used a couple of times already, continuous improvement. What did we do? What could we do differently? How can we be stronger in the future? And that's really what we, we look at here in this situation. The incident at hand occurred back in April of this year on Barbie Avenue. And again, highlighting to you that we, our work followed what you had already done internally, which would be expected of an accredited body. There are many positives. And so you think, well, what, you know, what, what didn't go well? Well, there were some things that there were opportunities, but there's some things that did go very well. So operationally, the things that needed to happen at that incident happened. So we, you know, we see that. We heard that from your personnel. We see that in your review. We look at all the incident reports and talk to the folks. Things that needed to go well, did go well. The, you know, there was a quick extrication of a victim. Your personnel remained calm. They performed well. And, you know, your, your people performed effectively and efficiently. So they did, they did what they needed to do. There wasn't a case of, of inaction. All of those are positives. The system worked as it should have been. And so we see those as positives. And I think your, your internal review looked at and found that as well. There were some opportunities. In this incident, you had, unfortunately, you had two victims and then you also had firefighters that were working to rescue those victims that became entangled and trapped and disoriented within the incident. That's a lot. It's a lot to handle at one time. You've got folks working on getting people out. You've got a case of where people who are working to do the rescue get turned and not able to exit the structure quickly. So it's very quickly to be overwhelmed in that situation for any fire department. But that's what happened in your case. And we heard that and your folks were well aware, this is what happened. And this is the, this is how we, what we were thinking. This is what we were doing. This is why this happened. It happens really fast. You know, in, in the fire and rescue world, things happen so very quickly. And this incident was certainly not an exception to that. You have many new members of your department and not, you know, differently than many other municipalities across the state. Most of us that have been here for a while have retired or in the retiring mode. And so you have many new people. And many of the new people in your organization bring a tremendous amount of strength. They bring a lot of strength in not only physical, but mental and experience-wise, but they may not have, have been in this type of incident before when you had that much going on. We've got people we've got to get out. We know that the injury to these folks are serious. We've got, you know, companies inside. We have folks that are calling May Day in a trapped situation. We have an incident commander that had more on his plate than any of us could possibly have imagined there at that, at that point. But that limited experience, we think it was a factor here in this situation. High Point traditionally operates with three firefighters per company. You'll hear more about that today. This incident highlights a, a value in operating with more than that. And you, with your SAFER grant, you will have the opportunity to make some of those improvements. But this incident does highlight some of the challenges that operating with three firefighters provide, you know, response to an incident. So we recognize that. Air management training is an important piece. And so this was a single family, you know, structure, one level. This was not one of your high-rise buildings. This was not a large industrial complex. This is the type of call most firefighters go to on a regular basis. The challenge with that for, for High Point, and I would, I would dare say the departments I led as well, is we get accustomed to working in that environment. We get accustomed to working in a residential, one-story structure because that's what we have in the most calls in. However, in those cases, we tend to, firefighters get a, an alarm on their air pack when, when the air starts running low. But we know well, we can get out here quickly. You know, we're not in this larger building. And so we heard that as, as we, you know, listened to your personnel. And we recognize reinforcing the, the air management policy, reinforcing exiting when you do go into alarm, while it is important in a structure like this, it really becomes important in a large structure, a high-rise building, a large commercial building. And so, you know, we see the, the warning flags for that. This is important for High Point to look at. The line of duty fatality that our facilitators worked with was in a case in a commercial building where the firefighter alarm did go off. They didn't exit the building. The firefighter became deceased in that building. So, you know, they've become, it's very, very real and we recognize that's something that's an opportunity for improvement. And the last piece was really communications and incident command. I think you could go to any, and Chief, I believe you, you would concur. You go to any incident, we rarely if ever find a, an incident that one of the opportunities for improvement is not communication. And that was the case here. Specifically for you, you had an incident commander that was very loaded with managing that incident, the incoming personnel, the treatment of the patients, his own personnel, you know, involved in the incident, trying to get them out and them calling a distress signal. So much happening on, on the incident. So it's very typical that we would see communications as an opportunity for improvement. So we, we provide, you know, some data and information with each of these to help move the organization forward. And all of those that we've just experienced in our team, and I don't think that different from what you've seen, but we've been able to look at that. So these are some steps that we recommend taking. For example, some additional training with air management, some, some external training courses and locations you may want to consider and that type of thing. So we have hopefully helped with that. The second area we were asked to look at is your performance benchmarking. And again, most, all of our work is North Carolina, but we, we do have some industry standards to compare to as well. So we look at what other cities of similar size. We ask Chief, who do you typically benchmark or compare with? And so we talk to all of this. In addition to that, we looked at other, some other survey information of other North Carolina municipalities. We looked at the school of government and benchmarking that they did and that they have compiled. And so we also look at the, the industry standard. And I'll, I'll explain to you like what is required from a staffing perspective, but then what is, is recommended. And there's a big difference with that. Okay? So we'll talk about that in this section as well. So we looked at your incidents. We went back in six years of incidents that you have had in High Point. Your best predictor of your future capabilities is looking in the, in the rearview mirror and looking at how you have performed in the past. And so we looked at, you know, a significant number, over 82,000 incidents over a six-year period. We looked specifically about your demonstrated performance in your first unit response as well as full complement. What that means is the time of arrival of the first engine that is typically supposed to arrive or first responding unit. And then what is the arrival time and performance of all the needed people and all the needed trucks that go to an incident. So we looked at both of those. And in those numbers, we had over 600 structured fires specifically that we looked at that had occurred in High Point. Now, most of your, your overall calls are medical calls in High Point. It turns out to be about 64%. And that's very typical of, of other fire departments as well. But we really tried to, we looked at the, that initial arriving unit, but we specifically went a little deeper and looked at that full complement. Just the number of people it takes to work a structured fire incident. What, what kind of time did it take to assemble those in High Point? And so from that, we have two pieces here that, that are important to look at. We always measure at the 90th percentile. And when I say we, it's not, and see fire chiefs, it's really just the, the industry standard. No one measures at 100. We measure it 90th percent. We want, always want to go, have a goal of 100, but realistically, you're going to have multiple calls occur at the same time. You're going to have storms come through that, that really impact your city service delivery. There can be mechanical issues that occur. It's just really impossible to be at 100%. So we measure at the 90th. That is the industry standard. And when you look at that incident that we, all those incidents that we looked at, you're at the 90th percent for all types of emergencies, six minutes and 30 seconds or less for that first responding unit. And so that, that time is, is well, is strong. It's very strong performance for your first arriving unit. No, no concerns with that. You'll find that's inconsistent with the accreditation standard. It's consistent with the industry standard. So that's, that's very appropriate. We typically look at that at about a four-minute travel time, a one-minute dispatch and a one-minute turnout time. So for structured fires, it's actually six minutes and 20 seconds. So, you know, you're very, very close to that, six minutes and 30 seconds. So that's a strong, that's a strong response. It's very indicative of your commitments to continuous improvement and accreditation. But in this particular piece, this structure fire piece, to get the necessary number of people on the fire ground, your time was 10 minutes and 19 seconds or less, 90% of the time. So it's a little bit longer. And, and to put that in a very simple term to, when you're responding fewer firefighters on the apparatus it responds, it takes more to get there. And so it takes longer travel time. Even though everyone leaves at the same time, it takes longer time to, for that number to arrive. But that's again, not, you know, not tremendously higher than expected. We'd really like to see that more in that eight-minute timeframe, 90% of the time. So more in that eight-minute timeframe.
My apologies, if you're taking questions while you're going along. So we have the standard, I'm assuming it's a 1710 standard, where we have to respond in a certain amount of time. But is it a function of just the time or time and people?
So two ways to measure. First arriving unit and remember, most of your calls are medical calls. When we look at this, we're looking at all your calls in this situation. You're doing really well with that. If you look at the industry standard, it's going to, it's built around a six minute and 20 seconds for, for structured fire. So when we look at that time, you're really within that, very close to that, about 10 seconds over. So again, it's not a requirement. It's an industry standard. So that's the first unit arriving. Okay? The, the, the structured fire incident though, when you're needing more people to, to assemble more people to do the necessary work of structured fire, that's where you're up to in the 10-minute plus range. So not a requirement, but it's an industry standard.
Well, it's, it's interesting because, you know, I've been reading a bunch of different things like that. And, and, you know, I've also talked to attorney and there are some people who lean on it as a standard and then some people lean on it as a requirement. So it kind of depends on who you're asking.
It, I think it's a best practice, you know, as far as is there, is there a legal requirement to follow that? No. Should that be what we're striving to meet? Yes. That's, that's my perspective on that. There's a lot of data. The, we have much more data than we used to have. If you've been doing some of the reading in that, you'll know that the, the standards and U.S. standards and technology, as you look at the studies and the empirical data, what does it take to be effective? If you're going to be effective, there's a lot of data about that. And that feeds into the industry standard. And you mentioned that is the NFPA 1710. And that's what's appropriate for High Point. There's two standards, one for career, more urban areas, and one for rural, primarily volunteer areas. Okay? So again, not required, but it is best practice and it's what we would say you should strive to meet. I will share in a moment just what is required for clarity as well. But it is important, you recognize we, we have a, a measurement for your first arriving unit and also one for your full complement. So if Ms. Smith smells smoke in her kitchen, she's got a stove on fire and she dials 911, she is interested in how long it takes for the fire department to arrive and start taking action. Now, there's a lot of things happen behind the scene. Her call has to be answered. It has to be processed. Firefighters have to be dispatched. They have to turn out, meaning they have to, to get to the point that wheels are turning on the truck. Then they have to travel. They have to get to Ms. Then they have to travel, they have to get to Ms. Smith's location, they have to set up, supply, get their water supply and take action. So there's a lot of pieces to that. We really try to follow this red bar at the bottom when we say total response time. And the reason is because that's to Ms. Smith, that's what it is, that's the time that it took. We know that there's many pieces, Ms. Smith may not care that there's all those pieces. I need help, I need help quick, okay? Whether that be a fire situation in her kitchen, or, you know, perhaps her child or something has collapsed on the floor, whatever that might be, there are incremental pieces behind that, but we do look at this as a total response time. In other words, your 911 time, your travel time, it all is response time. Everything really feeds into that. We did look at High Point's data all the way back to 1920, what were some of those times looking like? And in the 2425, just to say you stayed fairly consistent through the years, there was a little bit of an uptick in 2425 in some of the times as well. When we look at all of those incidents, and a large number of incidents obviously, over each of those years. We didn't see a particular reason for that. Some is just your growth, traffic congestion, some of the travel time issues that you may be challenged with. But we did look at it from total response time, and we want that to be a takeaway for you as well.
But before you go on, there's a significant change in the amount of incidents, because that might skew the graph a little bit, between 1920, 2120, 2021, et cetera.
You say fairly, my opinion, fairly consistent in the number of large.
Change of date.
Correctly, about 13,000 approximately this year.
Last year, 16,000.
16,000.
Okay, so the delta between is not, so it's not a big deviation?
Not a massive change in those years.
Is that correct?
The COVID years were difficult for everybody because there were a lot of changes in protocol and response, what you could respond to, what you couldn't. So we consistently see some bumps along 2020, but you stayed, you know, you stayed very consistent across that time period overall. So as we look, yes, the 1710 standard is our best practice industry standard. And that is reflected by the Center for Public Safety Excellence and Accreditation. It's reflected with the insurance rating system. All of those are very, very much connected. But I do want to give clarity about what is actually required. The piece from federal law that says that Chief Evans firefighters can't enter a structure until you have enough people there to affect a rescue, okay? So the inside of a structure that's burning is known as an IDLH or Immediately Dangerous to Life and Health, meaning this is a dangerous place to go into. So before I go into this structure, I have to have somebody there to get me out in case things go wrong. That is, that's not a best practice, that's not a we'd like to do that, that is a law. You have to do that. There is a provision that if the firefighters that arrive have a known rescue, something that they're confident, hey, I see somebody, I've got somebody coming up to me saying my child's inside, mom's inside, I can't get, she won't come out. If we have something where it's a known rescue, then you can violate that. But that's really the only time. And you actually have to document that, why did we do this and what did we do? So it's, the standard is you have to assemble at least four people before you go in, make an interior attack. And so the challenge in operating three-person engine companies is that three doesn't equal four. So you have to hold until you get that other second company in there. And that's going to vary based on what else is happening in the city, how, where the location is, how far they have to travel. Sometimes there is a delay, sometimes there may not be much of a delay. But unless you have a known rescue, the OSHA standard does say that you have to have these two people outside to be able to rescue the folks inside. And there's a lot of missing pieces that this doesn't necessarily show. In other words, you know, you don't see somebody over operating the truck and making sure that you've got lines and pressure. That's really just the minimum is the two.
So this requirement is in OSHA?
Yes, yeah. And we're in OSHA state in North Carolina, so that means that we have to, we can't, we can't be, have standards less than the federal OSHA, okay? So that is, and has been for quite a few years, and that applies to all departments, municipal, career, volunteer. You have to be able to conduct a rescue before you send people inside.
I have a quick question. And I don't know that much about firefighting, sorry, but. So let's say you've got a company that has three, and they get a call to a structured fire. And I guess, I don't know if y'all, it goes through all the radios or something. If there was another firefighter at a different station, could that person say, oh my gosh, I'll go ahead and run over there so that there could be a fourth person? Or how would that work?
No, we'd have to travel as a company.
As a company, oh, okay, okay.
But also, Chief, in that situation, you're typically sending more than one company?
Okay, okay.
First unit arriving, then another company is on that side.
Okay, okay.
You may be sending five different pieces of equipment. You're just having to wait until that second one gets there before you can go interior in that fire. That may be, you know, short, I can't tell you what that'd be. We can look at your data and show you what that has been historically, and I will show you that. But we don't know what that would be. We're just basing that upon a large number of incidents. So it really depends on when it is and where you are.
But that's only addressing the internal, inside the structure, right?
Correct.
But you can begin.
Absolutely, you can be securing water supply, you can be pulling lines, you can be getting ready to make entry. You just need to be, you know, hold that time period before you make that entry. So when we look at implications of this specifically for you, we looked at the three-person companies and then the four-person companies. So we were able to determine the arrival, when we looked at all your data, we looked at that at the 90th percentile. I have a person that's excellent at looking at this data and is really knowledgeable about how to put it together. And so when you're responding with all three-person companies, this is simply saying, on that first engine, I've got three people, six, nine, 12, 15, if you're running all three-person companies. This is the time that it's taking for that arrival, like a 449, six, 649, all the way up to those other companies. But however, if you're running a four-person company, it's a very simple multiplier, you're just adding an additional person. So if you have more people assigned to the crew, you're able to meet, for example, that two-in, two-out minimum, federal OSHA requirement, you can meet that with that first company. And you don't have to hold or wait on additional folks to arrive. So we looked at your incidents in High Point, and the difference or the delta between that is a minute and 11 seconds. So that means when we look at a structured fire, your first arriving unit's here about a minute and 11 seconds till the second one comes in. So when you hit the second one here, you're ready, you have four people, you're ready to make entry. If you had four on your apparatus, you're going to be able to do that obviously when you initially arrive. So fire doubles, roughly doubles, depends on the structure and the contents, but by average, fire doubles about every minute. So it's going to be hotter, it's going to be more involved, it's going to be more dangerous. So the longer, longer time period is certainly something to be cognizant of. But for High Point, it's about a minute and 11 seconds when we looked at all of your incidents compared to that fourth firefighter arrival.
But the six-minute response time with the second engine there for six people is 20 seconds under the six-minute, 20-second recommended standard.
Yeah, so the overall for structured fires, six minutes and 20 seconds, you're performing very well with that. Like your time, your, what I would say, we do a lot of station location studies, your timing and your deployment overall in High Point is good. You know, you're reaching, that first unit is arriving, you really don't have an issue with your first unit arrival. If we had to say a place that you have an opportunity for improvement, it'd be over here in the staffing area. And you're going to be able to address a lot of that, I think, with the safer grant that you have achieved, okay? So we identified this is an area of opportunity for improvement. But we wanted you to see, these are your times, and these are your first, second, third, fourth, and fifth in arrival, and then what that would look like for the firefighters. Now, it may take some time before all of your units are staffed at this four-person level. So most everything that we reviewed in the data, you were primarily staffed at three, okay? So and there, you have a company that operates with two, as an example. So we took the, we took the data that you had and how those units respond, and what was the reality? What was the actual data supporting in putting people on the scene? Then we started looking beyond that. So those seven cities, Asheville, Apex, Cary, Concord, Fayetteville, Gastonia, and Wilmington, those were all looked at individually. We talked to all those departments in contrast with your policies and staffing and standards. We talked to them individually and gathered data and all that's in your report as well. But those were, those are some of your benchmark cities in North Carolina. We did also look at some per capita across the state, what's the per capita for other departments of similar size. But we also looked at the school of government, and they have a longer list of municipalities that participate in their benchmarking study. So we looked at individual, you know, department by department, city by city. We also looked at what the school of government collects, and they do a rather thorough job at looking at that. And we looked at the per capita as well. What we see there is that historically, in High Point, these are your staffing changes when you look back 20 years. So look in the rearview mirror for 20 years, what's happened to your staffing? So this chart just shows, this is what's happened to your population. You've gone from 95,000 to about 118,000 through 2024, based on the data we were able to collect and some of the changes in your population. We also tracked the number of firefighters that you have had in High Point, and we've looked at the change, percent change in firefighters. So there were a couple here to note. 2015, you had a case where you implemented an engine two staffing at that point, and that increased that by a few percent. I believe this change here occurred in 2016 when you added a battalion chief into your operation as well. And then, again, a couple of things that are important to recognize is that the 12 over-hire positions that you have added are not factored into this. This is those that you have, you know, fully authorized. I really commend you for doing the over-hire, that's an excellent move and something I have used and used very effectively as a chief. And so that's a positive. It also does not reflect the 24 positions that you will be working on as you go through the budget and were approved in the safer grant. So this just shows you the population changes, the firefighter changes that have occurred looking back 20 years. But these are really important considerations. Over-hire is an excellent practice because most of the time when you begin an academy, you're not going to finish with that same number of people. Some may not make it out of that. And then you'll have others that will retire or leave during the time period that the academy's running. And so you put those together, that's an excellent risk management piece to consider in over-hiring. And then again, I applaud you for using the safer program as well.
Before you go on, pardon me, the number of firefighters, these are men and women who are actually on fire and not your overhead staff?
This is your total, this is your total authorized FTE or full-time equivalent.
But, I mean, there's, there's overhead folks that work under the fire department that do other things besides go to fire.
This captures your total allocated FTE or full-time equivalency. Because many of your administrative folks do respond back to incidents and are part of the response force. So just if you look at this from a per capita perspective, if you look at North Carolina and some of the school of government data, you'll say, you'll see that this hovers somewhere about two firefighters per capita per thousand people. So that would equate to about 240 for High Point, approximately. And so if you look at your percent, your FTE allocation you have, and then you consider your safer allocation, those come to be very similar in number. So looking at it per capita compared to other North Carolina municipalities, you'll see that that comes out to be about two per thousand. Again, not required, it's just, this is how other cities are handling that. How do we compare to other cities? That's what we were asked to do in our analysis. So we wanted to present that as a comparison. And so that would show about 240 firefighters for High Point compared to this year's allocation of 216. But you do have the 24 firefighters that are coming relative to your safer grant. So a few takeaways that we would offer to you, we'd encourage you to work on increasing that daily minimum staffing. We think that's important for the sustainability and safety for your firefighters and your response service delivery levels in High Point, is to work on that, work on moving that forward. We encourage you to continue working through the accreditation process, one of which, one of those pieces is a critical task analysis. So your demographics or your department change, your experience levels change, and part of going through the accreditation process is looking, well, how long does it take High Point to do this? We have great, you know, work from NIST and at the federal level, national research, but what does it take for High Point to do this? What is it, how many people does it work for High Point? That might be different than Greensboro, that might be different than Asheville, that might be different than other places, or Asheville or other places. So what does it take for High Point to do that? And so that's part of the accreditation process and cycle, and you'll be going through that. That's important because if your experience levels have changed, then your performance changes. What may have worked five or six years ago may not be the same today as it is with your current workforce. That's not a pro or con, you just need to look at that on a regular basis. We think having some instant management support is important. Your operation today is the first battalion chief arriving takes the instant command. The second one takes the safety role. Best practice many cities in North Carolina are using is to have a shift safety and training officer. So they work with training, improving your training, but they respond to incidents. And when they get to an incident, they become your safety officer, which lets your other battalion chief help you manage when you've got two people trapped and you've got crews calling mayday and all the chaos that happens. And so that is what we would say is a very solid best practice we see throughout the state. And then we also would say, look at, when you do have a working incident, meaning I've got smoke, I've got fire coming out the windows, I've got a long-duration working incident, is dispatching, immediately dispatching more resources. It particularly becomes important in the heat, when firefighters trying to deal with all this gear and heat and equipment, you need people to replace them. So best practice would be looking at deploying additional firefighters on your working incidents. Something we think you may want to consider as well, this bleeds over into other areas such as transit and transportation. Are there opportunities to put some traffic signal preemption within High Point? Is there opportunities for working with DOT to do that at some key intersections and especially your corridors? Where are your transportation quarters? What that does is allows the signal to give priority to a fire engine responding. That type of system is used in Greensboro as an example, and many in Burlington and many other cities. So it does help to move emergency equipment forward. And I would say it also does that in making it safer for your firefighters and the public as well because it will change the signals for them. There may be some grant opportunities there, so we note that to you. The air management training, like we talked about earlier, we think that's an important takeaway of continuous improvement. And then further developing the fire training center. We listened to your personnel, we looked at the training records that you have. That is an opportunity that you have as well to further develop the center. You want to use regional centers anywhere you can, many community colleges operate those. You want to send people to other places, but you also want to develop your own training facility and keep that as modern as possible. And so we give some information on that dynamic as well.
Concerning that final bullet, when it says develop the city's fire training center, so we're saying that we have an existing one that needs to be refurbished?
I'd say modernize is a term. I'll let Chief Evans use the terms he'd like. I said modernize, use some best practices there. There are quite a few in the area, in our area here, that are using some of the modular, we call them CONEX boxes, that really help to give realistic experience to your firefighters. But they also, you know, can be maintained a little easier than traditional. I used to manage a traditional concrete-type facility, and today, most of those have transitioned. So Chief, you may want to speak to that as well.
Yes, thank you, Chief Grayson. So yes, so that's what the developed means, is probably update a current facility. You know, I said to get that more live-fire training, the CONEX box concept like Chief Grayson mentioned, is that's an area opportunity that we have here in High Point that we can take advantage of.
Chief Evans, when was the fire training facility built?
19, the current building was 1985. That's the one-story building. The original facility built in the late 60s, early 70s. And that, the original tower was torn down about 10 years ago, so.
And we have several fire stations that were kind of built around that same time. So when you're talking about investing in a fire training facility, there are also stations that need to be invested in as well. Very similar situation to when we. Very similar situation to when we had the new police headquarters that had to be built. The city has several facilities that are aging.
Do we have any preliminary numbers on what that modernization would look like or cost?
Yes, for the, the CONEX type structure, it's looking about one and a half, $2 million. That would bring it, that would be a top-notch facility in, in High Point.
You've got some great examples around you. Kerr's building has a facility, actually there's a company in Winston that constructs those fairly locally. Greensboro has moved to that type of facility toward down the older tower, but you've got quite a few in the area. You get the most insurance rating service or ISO rating when your training facility is inside of your jurisdiction because they want to keep your firefighters here. You know, instead of having to travel somewhere else and being out of place and having longer response times, you get the best credit when your facility is here. So that's an opportunity, that's the way we, we put that, is an opportunity to improve your current facility and be able to give the most realistic fire training you can, especially with new firefighters. You know, that this is, they, they don't have the level of experience as your 25, 30-year people have. Giving them that experience will allow them to operate more effectively and safer on an incident.
Madam Manager, question on this last bullet. You just said that there are several stations that we also need to update. In terms of priorities, capital improvements, does the training center go first and then the station updates or?
I think there's, I think there's another study that, that needs to be done, which is our station location analysis that needs to be done. And I think that before, I would recommend investing in new facilities in terms of fire stations, we need to make sure that they're placed in the right locations and bring that forward. But the fire training facility is one that's part of our capital plan.
Okay. We would agree with the manager's angle of these weapons. So the last piece of this is training record. So there's a lot of training required to maintain ISO-1. Again, it's not legally, there's some that's legally required. Most is what you, you do in order to be proficient in your skills. And so we were asked to look at your training records and do that over a long period of time and contrast that with the insurance services office. Now, it's important for me to say upfront that you earned, you've earned a Class One rating, and you've earned nine, nine of the nine points in training, but there's still an opportunity for improvement, okay? So even though you're performing very well, when we look at your last evaluation, you did earn nine out of nine training points. You have an evaluation now that's in process and that's not back, so we were asked to look a little deeper at that and look specifically at the training records. We did a deep dive with that. These are the, I don't want to go through reading, I think you have that in your information, but these are the pieces that are measured and the components that we, we looked at. And so we have had a person who's very, very experienced in, in the training aspect and putting all of this into the lineup with ISO. We actually talked with ISO about this as well and got their, their review of what we had done and said, are we on track here? Are we missing anything? Because we wanted to bring something back to you that said, these are some, some suggestions just to improve and make your organization better. But these are the categories that ISO looks at, so that's the way we looked at them, and you'll see that type of data in your report. So again, you've met that criteria, there's not, there's not a way to say, you know, you have this deficit, but there's also a way to say that there are opportunities for improvement. More company training is an opportunity. So, and that means, you know, Engine One and Engine Two training together, not Engine One going and training and then the next day Engine Two coming and training or whatever, training together, multi-company training and training together, not only internally, but also with your neighbors that assist you in automatic aid. So if you have neighboring jurisdictions that come in and help you, training with them as well. So that company training piece is one we saw, but does have some opportunity.
Does that, if you have, excuse me, if you have, take that measure, does that not create a similar potential while the two units are training together to the, similar to the example you gave, that you have to go to Kerr'sville or whatever to throw off response times in case a call comes in?
You're always going to be in, in the city. In other words, that type of training, you're probably not, multi-company, you're probably not one jurisdiction, or if you are, you re, you reassign other companies to cover those areas. I, I yield to Chief to explain exactly how he does that. But most, if you have to pull people out, you'll reassign or redeploy during that period of time. It's not optimum, obviously, you know, you want, the fire service is very static based on where stations are, to deliver you, consistently deliver you that travel time that you're after four minutes or less. So, but we see that, that is an opportunity for you to improve your training and your training points. ISO looks at these components, I'll, this is Greg's term, I call them buckets. You have hours that go into this category or hours that go into that category. We like to look at, well, what can we do, what types of training can we do that might fit in multiple buckets? And one of those is, is multi-company training and heavier company training. So that's one reason that it, it kind of surfaces us a, a great opportunity. And that's really what this next one's talking about too, is optimizing your curriculum, making sure that, that what can go in multiple buckets, you, you work that, you determine where that can happen. And again, we're looking at this from a perspective, you bet the training with the ISO, but there are, you know, opportunities to enhance that a little bit more. Documentation, it may be just as simple as, we have all this in your report, but having more of a standard set of class titles and curriculum together. One person may put this class in one way, another may put it in this way, they're very similar, but because they're not exactly the same, it's a little harder to account for them. So we, we identify that.
Chief Grayson, and Chief Evans as well, how are we maintaining our records? Is it, are they digital records or do we have a learning management system? How, how are we maintaining our records?
Yes, to both. So you, you do some through an LMS, learning management system, you do others through a records management system that your department uses. So that, you're doing a good job using some electronic tools for that. Chief, you may want to.
Yes, we have two systems, a vector solution is the RMS, and also we just switched over to fireworks, which is also the RMS.
Okay. And vector solutions is a North Carolina best practice, many, many cities use that tool. I think they really surfaced during the COVID time period when we couldn't put people together but needed to maintain training, and you, as many others, have maintained keeping that, and you're certainly using it, no doubt about that. You have a lot of records in that system.
How often do they train?
Minimum, that's 20 hours per month each firefighter.
Is that distributed in classroom training, continuous or studio on demand or computer-based training?
There's classroom training, there's a training ground, also on the training ground as well, but there's a minimum of 20 hours that they need to have.
This last one here is about audit readiness and scoring, and that's really what we did. We, we really audited your training records, and you'll find lots of spreadsheets and details. We're, we're looking at what did they do, what's the standard, how does it compare? It's just a, a good opportunity to look at a third party, how are we doing, are we on track with this? We, we can see whether there's opportunities to label class or, you know, compartmentize it or be able to put it in multiple buckets. So doing that type of audit, and we encourage you to continue doing that periodically. I think when you get your next review back, it's a great time to do it again. You'll be, you can do that internally or third party, whichever you'd like to do, but these, these mock type ISO reviews, we find that to be really helpful. And, and like folks that have gone through that, they learned, well, if we had done X, we could have done better. You just learn, you learn from your neighbors, and, and High Point's very good at, at engaging other departments around them to help them. They help them on promotional processes, they help them on, on training, and so we just say, continue doing that, that type of work and audit what you have done with your training. But again, you know, we've, we've looked at, these are some ways to improve with training. We encourage you as resources become available to, to improve your training facility and then just work on training your younger people so that they have a, a deeper base of experience moving forward. So some next steps for you as elected officials here in High Point, decision makers and policymakers. One is to support that SAFER grant. I mean, it, it is very important in the, the two in, two out, it's, it's important if you want to look at how do we benchmark with the, you know, the per capita. If you look at firefighter safety, if you look at performance, how quickly can we get the, the necessary people on an incident? Those 24 positions, eight per shift, getting those funded so that when the, the grant period, performance period's over, that they stay with you and you're able to keep those, we think that is a, a top takeaway for you. Also, we ask you to look at additional incremental staffing in, in future years, and, and that's a longer term. We recognize it realistically, you've got to focus on getting the SAFER positions funded, but continue to look at your, your staffing levels, and, and that's incremental, that's over a, a long time period. And we just encourage you to listen to your manager and your fire chief. They, they have the data, they have the information, they know what to measure, just listen to them, and, and so these are, this is what we think we can do. We think keeping that on your radar when we can, when, when resources allow, when you need to think about our firefighter staffing, that's an opportunity for us to improve. Let's focus on getting safer, solidified, and then continue to think about that long term for the city to allow you to continue to perform well and be able to serve your residents. So we broke these out in a timeframe for you to think about, this current year and the upcoming, implementing those, those SAFER positions. There's eight per shift. We went through and within your report, you'll see where those were recommended, that we would see this could make the most difference for you, most positive difference. This is the stations we would see based on your data, six years of data, where we would recommend seeing those at. One is to help with that fire, shift safety and training specialist, one's to bring some staffing up on the rescue company, and then we determine those, those other companies that would benefit the most based on their location to be able to, to focus that on. And then there'll be some operational enhancements too, that we have a number of things that we're not covering in this, this review that are recommended, and, and really working on the retention and recruitment of your personnel. I like to say retain the people you have and then work to recruit others, but it's important to work to retain. And you have that in all of your workforce across the city, but it has been, become particularly difficult to, to retain and recruit firefighters for most of us across North Carolina. So when you look at the next three to five years, again, securing that funding to sustain the SAFER positions, and you're going to be coming back up on a reaccreditation cycle. So there are benchmarks that you'll need to meet to do that, and that's an excellent initiative, and I very much encourage you to continue, continue with that initiative moving forward. But then long-term, five to seven years and beyond, and that's, that's pretty long to look out, but we recognize that CIP and capital sometimes takes time, and when you think about stations and facilities, this is where that training facility, it may take some time to do that, you know, to get the capital funding in place and then construction and getting things in operation. But beyond that, also looking incrementally addressing that staffing need when, when and where conditions will allow. So we see that as a longer, you know, longer time period. So we tried to give you some things, if we were you, think about getting your, your SAFER personnel in place, work on retention of your personnel, work on recruitment, and then, and then begin to transition that to those longer-term needs over time as you look further out. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have here this afternoon.
Open it up. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. During this report, did you take any steps to look at equipment readiness, the state of the equipment overall?
We did not look at your apparatus, equipment, condition, mechanical, you know, any of that piece, that was not in our, not in our scope. We know that, we know the accreditation standard and some of the things that they're going to be looking for you to do, but we did not evaluate that in this, in this analysis.
Great, thank you.
Chief Grayson, in terms of the accreditation or the ISO rating, I know there was a heavy emphasis on moving to four, staffing of four trucks, four people, firefighters per truck. Is that a factor that will maybe negatively act against us, cause us to lose points?
With ISO?
Either.
So no, the, the ISO, 15% of your overall rating is staffing, and you actually can receive more than 15% if you have enough staff. So that's the largest of all components, the largest is staffing, second largest is training. So 15 for staffing, nine for training, that's one reason, you know, we focused on this, what are the, what are the, what are the big rocks? What are the big pieces that you need to look at? No, that, the staffing will improve that time. You may be at 630 now, getting that down to 620 obviously is, is, is a goal, and then getting your full complement, that's going to happen quicker with, with more staff. Even with your eight people coming per shift, 24 total, you, you will see improvements. I think the timing of this, we actually were, you know, doing this work before you got the, the award, but this is going to give you a good mark in the sand, this is where we were before we got this. So you'll be able to look, okay, in a year, what's the data say that, how we're performing? Once these people are in place and serving, what's it look like in two years? You're going to be able to, you've got a really solid baseline with the, the incident analysis we did to see how this changes your service delivery levels.
Chief Evans, I think just for counsel to understand, when did we become an accredited agen, agency?
The first time, it was 10 years ago.
And at that point, we were running with our staffing at the current rate? So we were accredited as an ISO-1 agency with our current staffing levels?
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir.
A, a key element of accreditation is saying, here's what we're doing to improve. That they want to see, this is what we're working on, this is what we're doing. That may have been where we're applying for SAFER positions, we're doing this, these additional measures. So incorporating that into the strategic plan will be important for Chief Evans and his staff.
Is it restrictions on the grant? Is the restrictions just to staff?
Yes.
Can you use on anything else but staff?
It's staffing.
Okay. So that's basically coverage of staff over a specific amount of time?
It's a three-year grant. It's a three-year grant, and then at that point, we have to be in a position to absorb the cost of the grant, which is roughly around $5 million, or we will no longer have those positions, which we're, we're preparing now to make sure that we're able to absorb those positions at the end of the grant period. And I think in addition to the positions that were there, I think that was the third time that we had applied for the grant. So although we started doing the over hires, as we were recognizing some pressures with our staffing, we were still applying for the grant while we were doing the over hires, trying to prepare for that.
I'm sorry, I'm.
You understand.
Minimum math brain at the moment. So you spoke about 20 hours of training a month per personnel. What is the cost? If it is not an answer you've got to give now, if you're not prepared for, but what is the cost per person?
I don't have an exact number, I can give that back to you, you know, the, the cost on the training?
I'm just curious of that, because I, I imagine there's something attached with that with these personnel.
So if I've been forming in a company for the Barbie incident, how might, I don't know, how might that have played out differently? I'm assuming there were a multitude of companies that were there, so how might it have played out differently?
We did look at your incident specific on Barbie and, and went in depth with your personnel about what went well, what didn't go well with that, situational opportunities that, that could improve. But we did, as a system, we looked a little more macro, like what's happening on all of your structured fire calls, what's happening through, through the entire city, rather than one specific from a, from a data, you know, perspective. In other words, you know, that, our focus was really to hear from your folks about what, what went well, what opportunities were to advance, and then the data piece, looked at all your structured fires beyond just that one.
Those are anonymous, I mean, they were, when you were talking to the firefighters over.
Yes, we, we didn't, we didn't capture, we had two fire chiefs talking to them, one on one face to face, we didn't capture. Who said what? We felt like, you know, they really, they were very receptive to hearing what, or sharing what their, their thoughts were, we, we didn't pick up on any real concerns about that. Our facilitators did allow them to, to reach back out to them too. If you think of something else you want to share, you want to share it individually or independently, you have that opportunity to do. So that, that was what we were able to bring as a third party to that equation. Again, it wasn't polar to what your internal department did, we just were able to put a little bit more structure around that.
Yeah. From, from, if I got this wrong, but I believe that there was a Pgram fire, January, February timeframe, where there was a fatality, so that's all rolled up in this data?
It's, it's included, we actually looked at the six-year time period. And I, I'll take you back to that legal requirement, you know, there's a, there's an industry standard and there's a legal requirement of the two in, two out. There is a, a piece though with, with that legal requirement, I'm, I'm repeating myself, but if you, if you know you have a rescue situation, you can go ahead and name the three. So, you know, my understanding is they knew, they knew that we've, we've got somebody here, we've got to get out. But things such as having that instant commander, having, having some help with them to manage those things, we think that's a way to improve, and so we give you some tools and steps to, to be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, anything else?
Yes, sir. Question, question for you. That eight per shift, how many do we have currently up now?
Per shift? Seven.
How many?
Seventy, seventy-two per shift.
Okay.
You got, your award for safer was twenty-four positions and it would go eight per shift.
Then we have three shifts, A, B, and C shift. So we divide the twenty-four over three shifts.
Got you, okay.
Councilmember Johnson, as part of the report, we did ask for them to, based on our historical data, to identify where it would make sense for us to place additional staffing. It's not necessarily that every company will have four individuals that are on an apparatus all the time, but what we want to do is prioritize where those staffing needs to be so that we can start to impact what the response times looks like, look like.
And that's where, if you can come back after you implement this a year later, your manager or fire chief will be able to share, this is where we were, this is where we are. You should be able to see that. So I encourage you, ask them to report that to you so you see the progress that you're making for, for your residents as you add these people once they're in place and training and in service. And that will take some time as well, obviously.
And Madam Manager, I'm assuming that as we analyze station locations, we can look at incidents, response from each of those locations and determine where we need to move stations which may improve overall response times?
It could. And there was a period of time actually as we were going through this where, you know, we had a station that was actually closed for a number of years. It was Station Two, it was closed, and, you know, we brought that back on. So there are some higher call volume areas than others.
Thank you.
Very good. Chief Grayson, Chief Evans, we appreciate that thorough report. The ISO and reaccreditations occur how often? I mean, once you get your ISO rating, when's that reviewed?
Approximately every five years. You're in the, you're in the cycle, it might be, you know, about right on track, it might be a few months later. You've just gone through that with Beara Risk, you're still waiting on the results of that. So approximately five years there. And your accreditation cycles are also in that five, same five year, but they're not synced, they're in different places, obviously.
I have one question on the preemptive signals that you recommended, and you said Greensboro has those. Madam Manager, do we, I know we've got some state roads, I'm sure Greensboro does too, between the two, what does that look like to implement for some, you know, you think, well, everything's computerized now, it should be fairly simple, but I'm certain that it's not.
It requires a level of coordination, but I think that is something that we can look at and evaluate. I don't think that would be the highest priority based on the recommendations that we have right now.
Have you seen massive improvements, Chief Grayson, like when?
I think it helps you, it helps you maintain a level as your community grows. That's my, my perspective. Guilford EMS also can use that system in addition to fire, if you have that system in place. So again, it helps you to maintain as your community grows. It can improve. We typically recommend you look at your major corridors that you can, that you're traveling on. There's a cost of equipment per, per fire engine or vehicle, there's a cost per signal. So, you know, it depends on how far. If you look at Greensboro though, it's over time, it's not something you do, you know, you do at one. Burlington started theirs with one signal and one company, but starting that is probably the hardest thing, but I encourage you to have discussion with your DOT folks and seeing, you know, when's our signal's going to be upgraded, when's the opportunity to do that, or some grant lines to help with that.
Well, and I do want to reiterate for this council and the others as we look into these things, that the safer grant is a three-year grant and that five million probably won't be five million in three years. So we have to be very cognizant. We of course want a safer city as we can have, like everyone. But I think to finish up, I'll circle back around to what Chief Grayson opened with, and that was very positive comments about our High Point Fire Department and the job that they do and provide for us. And so we're very fortunate. But biggest room in any house, I guess, is the room for improvement. So we appreciate the recommendations and we'll, we'll take those into consideration. Is there any other comments on this matter? Okay. Been hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to dismiss. First a motion by Councilman Holmes, second by Councilwoman Peters, and manager briefing is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.